Okay, let's call the meeting to order. First thing, some members of the board and members of the public are zooming in. Let everyone introduce themselves. We have all been interrupted. I think you're all muted, Ron.
Oh, they can unmute themselves.
Okay. Butch Burbank?
I can't. Butch Burbank, I'm at my home office and I'm alone.
Peter? Mark sent you there?
Yeah, Peter Malia, Town Council, sorry. It's hard for people to know when to speak when you're asking. So it might be easier for you or Carol to just read off the name.
Some people don't have names, so you can't.
Okay, so I see Bill Walsh is there. Do you want to wave, Bill?
Bill Walsh, and I'm here alone.
Okay, and then I can't see who's in the middle.
Dennis Ducharme.
Oh, Dennis?
Dennis Ducharme.
Okay.
At my Riverwalk office.
Okay, and I see Harry Schofield. Hi, Harry.
You're muted.
You're muted, honey.
Hi, Carol. Good evening, everyone.
Okay.
Hi, Carol.
Bob at Bodlin. Are you there?
He's muted.
He's here, he just stepped away.
He's waiting for you to call him honey, Carol.
He's waiting for what?
He's waiting for you to call him honey, then he'll say he's here.
They don't spend too much time with the kids, though, they're living at home.
That's okay.
I just talked with him, he's here.
Okay, Kamalish Patel.
Yes, I'm here at the Portland office.
Okay, Ray Corber.
Yes, I'm here.
Okay, Nylash Patel.
Yes, I'm here.
Okay, and Mike O'Connor.
Excuse me.
Okay, so present in the room here at the town office is Paul Baldwin, the alternate, Steve Noseworthy, member, OJ Robinson, the Selectments representative, Jim Spanos, the Chair of the Planning Board, Joe Chenard, the Vice Chair of the Planning Board. I'm Carol Mann, I'm the Planner. And we have an audience here. Ron Beard is Fire Chief and running our technology here. Susan Chenard is here. Norm Bartlett is here. And Roger Harrington is here. And that's it, I believe.
All of our full board tonight, all of you will be seated. Okay, so three sets of minutes to go over. Take a motion, take a motion to skip over that, so we can get to the other business at hand.
So I'd like to, I'd like to ask a question of Carol. Am I, am I seated for this meeting?
Yes, you are.
Thank you.
Okay, so OJ made the motion, Joe seconded. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, opposed. Right, we're going to carries. Continuing out the business. Application for second plan review approval. Kamalish Patel, by, who is African Engineer. Spotted application for second plan review. Second review approval to the planning board, African Engineer. Thomas S. Greer, P.E. of Walsh Engineering Associates, Inc. One Karen Drive, Suite 2A, West Main, 04092. Agent for property owner, Kamalish Patel, DBA Greenwood LLC, 1150 Brighton Ave, Portland, Maine, 04102. Thomas Greer, retired, at William Walsh, P.E. of Walsh Engineering Associates, Inc. One Karen Drive, Suite 2A, West Main, 04092. Successor applicant. Property owner, Kamalish Patel, DBA Greenwood LLC, 1150 Brighton Ave, Portland, Maine, 04102. Property, Bond Road, Land Only Map, 112 Lot 001. Northeast of the intersection of Forswood Drive and New Hampshire Group 112, Kang Omega Highway. The property is located in the general use G U district. Rose Project. Application of Thomas S. Greer, P.E. of Walsh Engineering Associates. Request on second plan review approval to change use of one vacant lot of 6.35 acres to make site improvements to include 96-unit hotel and five-unit condominium residential unit with parking for 121 cars, for a total of 95,390 square feet of curvaceous surface. Project includes gravel wetland for stormwater treatment and two infiltration systems to limit the total volume runoff status of COVID-19, 2019. Planning would determine the application to be complete. Started the public hearing process. The public hearing was continued to December 11, 2019. On December 5, 2019, the applicant requested an extension and agreed to waive the 65-day lock. Planning would, planning board to make a determination of their request for second plan review approval. Planning Board granted applicant's request for an extension on December 11, 2019, to be heard on Wednesday, February 12, 2020, at 6:00 P.M. The planning board granted applicant's request for an extension on February 12, 2020, to be heard on Wednesday, March 11, 2020, at 6:00 P.M. Planning Board granted applicant's request for an extension on March 11, 2020, to be heard on April 8, 2020. March 11, 2020, planning board meeting not complete for the matter, so the planning board granted applicant's request for an extension on March 11 to April 8, 2020. Although the news about COVID-19 made a meeting, on that being questionable, the New Hampshire State Governor issued an emergency declaration, Order Number 23, with a stay-at-home order under May 4, 2020, after which the meeting was extended to May 13, 2020, at 6:00 P.M. Due to the closing of the town offices to the public. Request for an extension to July 8, 2020, due to the impact of COVID-19. Cattle heat and its progress was granted on May 13, 2020, after agreeing to waive the 65-day lock. Planning would make a determination on their request for second plan review approval. Okay, so at the last meeting, we had four items that were under consideration and resolved.
Okay, that's page 16 of the March 11 meeting.
Yeah. And those four items left. Fire suppression onsite water storage to be shown on the site plan. Number two, traffic study to be set since New Hampshire DOT will be based on the complete build-out at Forest Ridge Resort. Item three, the guy wire needs to be moved out of the stormwater drainage detention basin. And number four, finish up sewer capacity study analysis from Dodge Place to the Hampton Inn site. Ray, can you update us on the progress?
For me, I'm sorry, I can barely hear you.
Yeah, I'm having trouble as well hearing and understanding. I can read it fortunately, but when it stops being legible, I will lose ability to follow.
Butch, can't you hear, Mark?
Your voice, with the positioning of the microphone, or I don't know what, what microphone you're using, but it's not picking up enough articulation.
Okay.
I mean, I can read along with you, but as soon as that stops, I'll be done.
Does anybody else have that problem? That's online?
Are the rest of you doing Zoom? Are you, have the same problem with the hearing?
Go ahead.
Difficult. I think Jim was reading pretty fast, and for folks who don't have the documents in front of them, it was probably hard for them to understand what he was saying. So just, I think, slow down and enunciate a little bit more. But I think the reading, the reading portion of the meeting is probably over anyways.
I agree with, I agree with Mark. It is difficult to hear, you know, from the, you know, the planning board mics.
I'll, I'll read it again.
No, no, we don't need to read it again, excuse me. Peter's point goes exactly against the grain of what I was saying, because the issue for me is the sound quality, not, not the issue of slowing down to follow the reading. I just think you need to be closer to a microphone.
My desk there.
My desk?
Yeah. We're gonna switch microphones, yeah.
Or maybe you need a cardioid microphone instead of an omnidirectional microphone.
Okay, can anybody hear us?
Yep.
Clear now.
Ron, I don't see it.
Peter's muted.
That's good.
Bill's muted.
Very good.
Ron, that was a lot better.
Okay. Steve. Can I see that, yeah, that data? I want to see what the front of hand looks like. I can't find this. Hey, so, Cal, you ready to roll?
You can just stop that, Carol.
You can just stop.
All right, Ray, can you update us on the four conditions that are outstanding?
He's muted.
Are you there, Ray?
If you are, you're muted.
How, yeah, okay.
I'm curious.
Yeah, I'm here, but I'm not hearing any questions.
Peter, can you update us on the status as some four outstanding conditions?
Uh, yeah, the, as far as the outstanding conditions are concerned, start with the, probably the simpler ones. It's the, the guy, one of the conditions, I believe, was the guy wire. They needed to remove that from the stormwater management practice, the detention ponds. They coordinated with the Utility Authority, and they, they did do that. So that, that, that requirement has been met. Any questions on the guy wire?
Self-explanatory.
You'll have to speak up, I can't hear you.
That's fine, that's self-explanatory.
Okay.
Traffic study.
Uh, on the traffic study, they were requested to do a, a study assuming a full build-out of the Forest Ridge development. And based on the results of that study, the study was completed by Steve Hernaw, a traffic engineer that the applicant retained. And the, in the final analysis, they determined that the, the traffic movements will continue to operate well below capacity through the year. The planning year, I think they chose, was 2031. So from a capacity standpoint, the intersection, even under a full build-out of the Forest Ridge development, is adequate.
Okay, DOT signed off on that as well?
Uh, the DOT responded, I believe, back to Carol in an email, saying that they're not going to be issuing any new driveway permit applications, and they have completed their review, and they have no more further comments. Is, Carol, is that, is that your understanding as well?
Uh, yes.
Fire suppression onsite water storage to be shown on the site plan.
Uh, yes, they, they show a, a onsite water storage tank. They do, in their submittal, they, they provide a manufacturer cut sheets on what they were proposing to put in. The capacity that they're calling for is 269,000 gallons. It's located, if you have the plans in front of you, I believe it's on sheet C 3.1. And the tank is located behind the building in the rear parking lot, towards right side of the building as you're standing on means. So they're proposing to put in the 269,000 gallon storage tank. And if you're looking at the plans, if you look at the rear of the storage tank, to the right corner of the storage tank, there's a 12-inch water line that's connected to the storage tank, and that's connected to a hydrant, which obviously the fire department would have gone to, and that would be for their hose allowance. They're also proposing to use the storage tank for their building sprinkler system, the way I interpret the design and the layout. So that storage tank will provide the full fire suppression requirement for the building. Any questions on the design?
Any questions? What happens, Wood? Paul, go ahead.
Ray, on your memorandum of July 7, you had some comments regarding the, the fire. And you want to know about, there was a couple of tanks that were there. And you wanted to know what they were for, did you get interest to that?
Uh, yeah, there's a, there's a still, there's still a note on the drawing for, calling for a 30,000 gallon tank. In my conversation with Bill Walsh from Walsh Engineering, my understanding is that that was a note that they just missed. So that note will probably come off. My understanding is that the 30,000 gallon tank is not being proposed. So that's an edit that needs to be done to the drawing.
So 30,000 gallon tank will, will come off?
Yeah, so that note will come off. Is that right, Bill? Is that correct?
Yes, Ray, that's exactly correct. It was a, that draftsman's error. They just missed taking that note off. It was when we had started with them.
Yeah.
Ray, you also had two other items submitted basis of design report, the proposed fire protection system under B. And C, provide details of our storage tank and hydrant assembly.
Yep. So those, those would be two requirements that, as far as, the first requirement that you mentioned, Paul, the basis of design report, there isn't enough detail on the plans to indicate just exactly how this system is to operate. In my conversation with Fire Chief Beard, we discussed, you know, what additional information that Chief Beard might need to make sure that it meets all the town requirements and the state fire marshal requirements. So what I'm suggesting is that the applicant submit a basis of design report, which basically just identify details, just how that fire suppression system is to work. Because that's not articulated on the plan. Basically, what you see on the plan is they're acknowledging that they're going to provide onsite water storage for the fire suppression system. But there's some more, the devil is in the details. So we're, we're recommending that they submit a basis of design report that articulates how the system is going to work, whether the, the building sprinkler system is actually going to be drawing off of that tankage, and also to provide some details on the tankage. Because the tankage that they submitted on is, is, is really for stormwater detention as opposed to, you know, a fire cistern. The fire cistern, there are some NFPA requirements that fire cisterns must meet, and there's not enough information that's been provided to indicate whether those requirements have been met or not. So we're just asking for some additional information, just to confirm that the fire suppression's going to need NFPA.
Yeah, and the last one, the details of Buckle Water Storage Tank and Hydrant Assembly?
Yeah, same story there. We just want to, you know, again, we just want to make sure that the hydrant's going to go in in accordance with town standards. And again, the same thing on the water storage tank. We want more details on the water storage tank to make sure it meets the NFPA requirements.
So these will need to be on the plan and have to be.
Yeah, at some point, it, it should be articulated on the plan, because the planning board's going to sign off on the plan. And that way, once it goes to construction, you know, when we're, when the town's out there with the contractor, you know, deciding what's going to go in the ground, everybody's looking at, and that's the shared understanding about what's actually going to get constructed. So, so we're recommending that that information be put in the plan set. And it's not in the plan set at this time.
So I guess my question is, do you rate, is there anything in the submittal of a, a design report that should be done prior to any approvals? Or is it going to be done after it's approved? Does it need to be submitted prior to? Or is that something that's done after?
Uh, my suggestion is that, one of the reasons why we suggested a basis of design report is because it, you know, it doesn't require a higher level of engineering effort to produce. So my suggestion is that a basis on report be submitted in advance of approval.
I couldn't hear that.
I couldn't, I didn't understand.
Can you repeat that, Ray? Because like, you kind of cut out.
Yeah, my, my, yeah, my recommendation is that the basis of design report on how the fire suppression system is to function and operate, and also provide additional details on, you know, what's going to get installed. My suggestion is that be submitted prior to approval.
Did there, engineer, say that? Who's there?
Put that on the plan.
Yeah. If, if I may, Mr. Chairman, um, yeah, I mean, we, Ray and I talked about this. I think there is a somewhat of a timing issue here in, in, you know, how much is done and when it's done. Obviously, we're committed to providing the storage and providing the, the system that, that needs to be done to, to provide the fire protection for the building. I guess our thought, and if the board's so inclined, would be that it could be a condition of approval that we're allowed to submit this prior to building permit being, being issued for the, for the structure. It's just, it's going to take some time to put this together. Obviously, we have to go to the, to the fire marshal, we have to go to the town, we have to go to the fire marshal. That's often done, at least when I see it, sort of during the, during the building design process, which we haven't, haven't delved deep into, obviously, yet, without site plan approval.
Any other questions? All right, lastly, the sewer capacity study.
Yeah, on the sewer capacity study, the information that was submitted by Horizons Engineering, I'll just summarize it real quick. The, essentially, the, the sewer interceptor that they understood they were tying into is currently, based on their calculations, is currently, the capacity is maximized. So there's no available capacity, based on the numbers they provided to us, for the Fairfield Inn to connect to the sewer system. Based on the information, and we just got, we just got that report on Thursday. So we, we had to hustle up to get a response back yesterday to the town staff, and talked about it today in our meeting. And the information, part of, some of the information that was submitted by Horizons indicated to me that maybe the connection for the sewer that would serve the, the hotel was not actually on the south side of the street. Based on the survey that Horizons had done, there was no tie-in that was shown at the intersection to Dodge Place. So I suspected maybe that wasn't the tie-in location. So Nate, Nate Hadaway and I collaborated this afternoon. Nate went out and did some field verification and determined that the sewer interceptor that they thought they were tying into is not on the south side of the street. It's actually on the north side of the street. So their analysis need, didn't take into, into consideration the correct pipeline that they were tying into. Just things, they go back and reevaluate that tie-in. So in the final analysis here, it actually might benefit the development and the applicant in the sense that the sewer line they thought they were tying into definitely wouldn't have worked, based on their engineer's analysis. But since that's not the sewer line they're tying into, the sewer line they are actually tying into actually may work, but we don't have those numbers to confirm it. So we need to see those numbers before we can sign off on it.
Okay. Anyone have any questions on that? Paul?
So, Ray, what happens to the sewer pipeline from where the, that was commented on above? I believe with accountability is down to the town's interceptor that is currently at, or will be at capacity, based on current approvals?
I'm, I'm sorry, Paul, it was breaking up. Could you repeat that, please?
The sewer line on Main Street from town building to the sewer treatment plant. My understanding was that that was, that's at capacity, or, or, based on what the approvals have already been given, that will be at capacity, or it refers over, based on the fault?
No, here, the, based on, based on the analysis that was completed by Horizons, they're indicating to us that the sewer line that is, it's not actually directly behind Town Hall, but it's the next building over to the, to the west. That sewer line, that sewer line segment, that's currently at capacity, meaning there is no more flow that can go into that pipe, based on Horizon's numbers. It's just that one segment of pipe. I think it's two, it's like 254 feet. I think, in my, in my memorandum, I think I included that spreadsheet. Is there a spreadsheet on the, in my memorandum in front of you?
On the last page. Number five, technical memorandum, number five, and it's on the back.
Yeah, it would be number five or 5A, whatever you have in front of you. There should be a spreadsheet, there's some highlights on the spreadsheet.
Yeah. Yeah.
Right, if you look down, if you look down at, at the first column, the line number, look at line number 20. There should be an arrow there that, calling it out. You see that? Yes, no?
Yes.
Yes.
Okay, all right. So that's the line that's in the surcharge condition.
Okay, so I think when you explained it to me, Ray, you said, under the column that says capacity, the capacity is 2.4. And that's the third from the last column. And then the last column talks about what the calculation is, the 2020 calculation. And that's the 3.07. And so what you're.
That's correct.
Point, put point, 3.07 through a 2.4, over. We must just.
That's correct, Carol, you have that right. So your capacity at that line is 2.54 CFS. And with the hotel and your existing loading, not including the vested but undeveloped or unbuilt portions of the vested developments, is 3.07. So obviously, the 3.07 is a larger number than 2.54.
That means we're all, we're going to be over.
I'm sorry, 2.4.
We're going to be over with, without even considering the, the best, the projects that are.
That's correct.
This project, put it over.
So what's the cure for that?
No, this project won't. No, this project won't put it over. You're currently over.
In, in, in talking with Horizon, they said that that was actually indicated on the 2007 study that was done by Duane King. So apparently, it's been over for 13 plus years. So it seems like there is something that's not right on the numbers. And I think as Ray pointed out, it may actually discharge to a different, um, lateral system or main system.
So Ray, does this need to be corrected or investigated prior to approval? I mean, how can you approve a project if you don't have sewer capacity?
Uh, yes, that would be, that would be my recommendation is to, you know, you know, let, let, let's figure out, let's figure out what the, where the real tie-in is, figure out which section of the interceptor, whether it's on the north side of Main Street or the south side of Main Street is actually the connection. We believe it's on the north side based on the, uh, fieldwork that Nate did this afternoon. So my suggestion is make, let's make sure that there is capacity available before you approve the project.
So. I have one more question. I, I, I don't know who it goes to. OJ or Butch or someone. The, the other projects that have been approved, does that come into consideration at all? I know that, at one time, it was first come, first served, but Forrest Leffler changed that. So what was the, what was the change?
Oh, uh, Paul, it's Butch. It's our, my understanding, the board's, the board's decision was that these, uh, this hotel was, 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 uh, could proceed without taking into consideration the approved developments that already approved, uh, by the board in the, in the town. So that's what Ray was saying is even without their numbers, um, in, uh, taking into consideration South Peak, uh, remainder of Forest Ridge, uh, the, all, you know, uh, the landing that we're over on that line. The line on the, um, north side of, of 112 is what Ray's talking about. We don't know. That's the line where they would tie into and that, that analysis was not done. So, um, that needs to be done. And they may have capacity, but right now, the line that's looking out my office towards, uh, the, the hotel, um, that line, wherever it is out there, um, is over capacity as we speak. It can take no more according to that study, but it's been that way for 13 years. And to my knowledge, we've had towns had no issue. So this, it needs to be studied. We don't, something's wrong. Something don't make sense.
So I guess this, the, the act, it's up to them if they want to redo the sewer capacity study, rerun the numbers, and come back to us.
Why would the town do that? So, yeah. If we're to be a town's responsibility to, to know what the sewer capacity is in the sewer lines?
Well, if I can say that, uh, what, the town is fine right now. We're only, we're only talking about this because we have a hotel coming on. So to your, to your question, Paul, I would, I would, I would say that, that we ask this developer to tell us which line he wants to use and what the capacity of that line is.
Yeah. I think the issue that we've had is that, that line wasn't spelled out, or I guess we didn't know that that was there. Horizon is looking into it and trying to figure those numbers as we speak.
Anyone have any other questions? Please, a public comment while we're here. Motion, open up public discussion.
Say move.
Second.
Is there a thread line running down Pollard Road?
What line on Pollard Road?
Sewer line. What's capacity in that one?
Would you know what the, uh, sewer line running down Pollard Road, is that one at capacity, do you know?
The, the sewer line that runs down Power, uh, Pollard Road, um, the analysis indicates that there is sufficient capacity to handle the hotel. And that would be down Pollard Road to the intersection of Dodge Place and Main Street. That sewer line has sufficient capacity for the hotel.
Three to three places, three lines. Look, someone's engineering study.
Yeah, I think we all need to speak up. Everybody can hear.
I'd like to make a comment. I can hear absolutely everybody who's at home clearly. Everybody has a microphone or a headset or something that picks their voice up. I can hear nobody that is present in the committee meeting clearly. And I think that reflects the fact that we have kicked that can down the road. I, I guess we're getting good at soccer. But we need, if we're going to continue Zoom meetings, which I think is in our future, I think we need to buy, the microphones do not have to be expensive fancy microphones. This, this microphone, I don't know if you can see it. Costs about 35 bucks. It's a cardioid microphone. It works fine. You need a multiplex hub or some, just a USB hub. And you could provide a, a, a microphone at every spot. It doesn't have to be this one. But there are many perfectly decent microphones that cost 20 or 30 or 40 or 50 bucks a pop. And we can provide a mic wherever seating space. And then we could actually hear what we're saying. Otherwise, we won't.
Whenever you're ready, I'll.
Hold on. Ron, I can get what you said.
Did they get what he was talking about? Is it line on the south side and north side at 112?
Yeah.
It's also on the road. But there is going to be another hotel coming in, but across in Fairfield in the next 20, 15 years. Yeah, then we should get the sewer line to give everybody.
Motion was to open public comment. Would you need the motion? Is there a second? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any members of the public would like to comment?
I'll take it upon it.
Harry, yes, go ahead.
All right, Doug. Good evening, everyone. Harry Schofield, the president, uh, of the Board of the Forest Ridge Property Owners Association. You are all in receipt of a written testimony that I submitted today through Carol on behalf of Forest Ridge Property Owners Association, um, objecting to this project. On October the 23rd of last year, we submitted a lengthy, uh, written testimony, uh, listing a number of objections to this hotel. Uh, but the primary objection being traffic safety at that time. And the fact that no traffic study had been done. And we were pleased that you, uh, requested that the applicant perform a traffic study. We took it upon ourselves at the time to be proactive, again, to hire Bedford Design Consultants to come up and look at the property and make some recommendations. Those recommendations are a part of, of the October 23rd, 2019 submission uh, by Forest Ridge Property Owners Association, and they're attached here tonight. And, uh, you know, fundamentally, um, while we're pleased that you required a traffic study, the traffic study conducted by Prenor and Company submitted on the 26th of November of 2019 did not address our primary concern for traffic safety. It, it, it simply focused on traffic, you know, volume. And some of the measurements and the data were somewhat arcane. But, but putting that aside specifically, specifically, the Prenor study did not address the following issues raised by Bedford Design Consultants when they reviewed the site. Uh, first of all, it did not perform a site distance analysis. The report did not address driver reaction time due to the lack of a site distance analysis. It did not evaluate tractor turning, uh, tractor trailer turning radiusness. And it did not consider the horizontal and vertical alignment of the hotel access drive as it relates to the existing divided entrance island and, and the curvature of Forest Ridge Drive. These are all things Bedford Design recommended, which we sent to you, which the traffic study conducted by Prenor and Company ignored. Uh, we read through that thing carefully. Several of us on the board have looked it over. And, and I know Bob Gloffman wants to comment on that, uh, you know, further. Uh, so Bob, if you're available, could you pick it up now and then I'll continue?
Okay, just a couple of things. Looking at the traffic study, I, I'm not going to second guess their analysis because frankly, I'm not qualified to do it. But they do attach various documents that they are using as the basis of their analysis. And those seem wildly incorrect. For example, attachment A has, uh, identifies the Forest Ridge community as consisting of three junior associations, when in fact, there are six bus lines. It's, I'm the president of the Forest Ridge Unit Owners Association. And it says we have 12 units in six duplexes. We actually have 82 units in 26 buildings. Some of them are duplexes. Some of them go up as high as six, uh, townhouses per unit. Uh, I just frankly don't know where they got this information. If this information fed into their model, uh, this is a garbage in, garbage out scenario. And just looking at the results they are predicting, uh, it's notable that uh, when they're predicting traffic, there seems to be a lot more cars that are leaving Forest Ridge than ever entered. And I'm not sure what they think we have up here, whether they think we have an auto plant that's producing cars, but, uh, I frankly don't understand how a model could predict that. Now, those are just my general thoughts. Looking at this, again, I haven't been able to evaluate the models they use because I don't have access to those. But, uh, it certainly looks like the data they're entering into the models is questionable.
So just to pick up, uh, on that, and we have Bob left off again, um, we, we have all the concerns Bob just, uh, uh, you know, listed. But, but again, primarily, we are concerned about the line of, the lack of a line of site distance analysis and the reaction times, you know, needed to prevent accidents. It, it's just a ridiculous proposal as it's currently configured. And we strongly object to it on the basis of this type of traffic safety consideration. Okay, so the next issue is that the applicant does not have the legal right to construct the entrance to the hotel as proposed. Okay, they, um, we are, um, i- in, uh, the, the position of, of, you know, being the grantee of a quitclaim, you know, deed, which gives us control of any new configurations on that drive. And, uh, uh, the, the, you know, applicant simply, as I pointed out in the letter, does not have the right to infringe on Forest Ridge property and improvements and unlawfully make changes to those improvements. Uh, and I'm going to refer to Bob again, who's a full-time resident in Forest Ridge and also an attorney licensed to practice in New Hampshire. And, and I'll let him elaborate on, uh, our, our easement rights, uh, Bob.
Over the years, Forest Ridge has been granted an easement to construct and maintain a road in that area. And in those easements, which were granted by Green Acres, who is the predecessor property owner of the property on which the hotel is going to be, is proposed, granted us an absolute easement to, to, to construct and maintain a road. They reserved the right to travel along the road that we built. They reserved the right to cut the road to produce, to run underground or overground utilities. They didn't reserve any other rights. And the easements are very clear that our rights are superior to the rights of the grantor. The, the property that, uh, the hotel is proposed for. And, uh, you know, if they're going to want to build anything which connects to that road or change anything about that road, they're going to have to work with us to, uh, have us come up with, uh, some propose, uh, some acceptable alternative easement structure for the road. At this point, they haven't talked to us at all. And they can't proceed without talking to us.
So again, to follow up on that, our review of the materials submitted by the applicant indicate that they proposed to construct an entranceway which intrudes on our property rights under the easements, as Bob just described, and that they proposed to permanently destroy the improvements Forest Ridge constructed in the right-of-way granted by the easement. Specifically, compiled drawing 3A proposes to permanently remove the back part of our raised fieldstone entrance planter to accommodate traffic flow out of the hotel based on the proposed entrance and exit location. Cutting off that back section of our entrance planter diminishes and debases Forest Ridge property by eliminating our rear garden area and flagpole and ruining the symmetry of the current structure. Furthermore, the applicant proposes to modify our roadway by placing a crosswalk behind the road divider planter. Not only would this proposal trespass on our property rights under the, under the easement, it, it's foolhardy to place a crossroad, or excuse me, a crosswalk at what may be the most dangerous, uh, place possible. Uh, again, uh, remember, folks, that FRPOA has never been contracted or contacted, excuse me, to ask permission, uh, to make these modifications to our property. Uh, if the applicant wishes to construct an easement onto Forest Ridge Drive, it must then work with FRPOA, as Bob suggested, to develop a proposal which will be safe and not unreasonably intrude on our rights under the easement. Again, we're not unreasonable, must insist that our legal rights under the easement be honored. Uh, instead, the applicant has totally ignored our property rights in developing this proposal. Thus far, it must be rejected. And, and once again, the proposed entrance and pedestrian crosswalk are unacceptably dangerous. As described above, the lines of sight for traffic approaching the proposed entrance to the hotel presents an unreasonable risk of vehicular accidents associated with the entrance. In addition, the current plans proposing a crosswalk behind the Forest Ridge sign and planter is a huge safety issue. Vehicles traveling from Route 112 to the hotel cank rec center or Forest Ridge will not be visible to pedestrians crossing Forest Ridge Drive. And the pedestrian would not be visible to vehicles tuning into Forest Ridge Drive from 112. In addition to that, the crosswalk doesn't lead anywhere. This issue was pointed out previously to the applicant, and it was suggested that the hotel simply connect to the mu-, to the multi-use bike path or the multi-use path and use the existing crosswalk for the bike path that's parallel to 112. It's unclear why the applicant has not made this change. However, this misguided proposal again must be rejected. Uh, the final point I want to make tonight, and I'll just, you know, summarize this, uh, is the town's responsibility for Forest Ridge Drive. Forest Ridge Drive was constructed in 1988. It's a private road to access the Forest Ridge community. Since it was built, the town has continued to treat Forest Ridge Drive as a public right-of-way. It has been used for access to the cank rec center, and the town has allowed private homeowners to connect driveways to Forest Ridge Drive. Now the town is considering authorizing a commercial establishment, the proposed hotel, to use our private road. In these circumstances, it's becoming more and more inequitable to expect the Forest Ridge community to continue to be solely responsible for upkeep and maintenance of this road. While we have reluctantly accepted this responsibility up to this point, uh, if the town approves the proposal to construct the proposed hotel with an entrance on Forest Ridge Drive, anywhere on Forest Ridge Drive, we will insist that the town accept responsibility for its upkeep and maintenance, at least as far as the second entrance to the cank rec center. Uh, we have never objected to public use of Forest Ridge Drive. But we think simple fairness requires that if it's going to be treated as a public right-of-way, the town must assume its responsibility. So FRPOA objects to this application, uh, for all the reasons listed in this letter and our October 23rd, 2019, you know, testimony. Beyond its specific and negative impact on Forest Ridge, I believe we have documented the fact that Lincoln does not need another hotel. If however, you shrink from denying approval on these grounds, you must reject the current design proposal on the grounds put forth in this testimony. Again, the current proposal poses dangerous traffic issues due to lack of driver reaction time. The location of the crosswalk as proposed is highly dangerous. The proposed entrance location is not only dangerous, it requires unlawful destruction and modification of Forest Ridge property. And once again, the developers do not have the rights that allow them to modify Forest Ridge Drive and the improvements constructed and owned by FRPOA on that property. So just in conclusion here, if the town wishes to find a means to grant these developers a site plan approval, it must, at the very least, step the following conditions. The entrance must be moved through the down Forest Ridge Drive and provide sufficient distance from the intersection and designed to facilitate reasonable driver reaction times. The proposal must not destroy Forest Ridge property and must recognize the rights granted to FRPOA under the easement to the Forest Ridge Drive right away. And finally, the town must accept Forest Ridge Drive between Route 112 and the Kankakee Center as a town road and accept responsibility for ensuring traffic safety on Forest Ridge Drive. Nothing less than that is acceptable to Forest Ridge Drive, and believe me, we are prevented, we are prepared to defend our rights in this regard. Thank you.
Phil, would you like to say anything, comments just made?
Hello, thank you. Yeah, I'm gonna, I guess, address a couple of issues that that were just brought up here. You know, the rights of of the easement. Not an attorney, I read a lot of deeds. And I guess as Mr. McLaughlin's not an engineer, I guess I'll play, I'll play attorney for a little bit here. I'm gonna share my screen real quickly. Again. And this is the actual deed that that you all have in your, in your information. But it clearly says that the grantor accepts the rights and reserves the rights to travel in common with the grantee at successors of signs over the road constructed on the right-of-way conveyed herein. The road, the, the land in fee is actually owned by the applicant. It's an easement that that has been provided to Forest Ridge. That's my understanding of it. There's another state sentence or part of this easement that was pointed out here, which is the grantee shall so maintain and operate the right-of-way here and granted in such a manner that the operation thereof will in no way hinder or prevent the proper and reasonable use and enjoyment of the property of the grantor. The grantor would be the applicant. They cannot do things that that don't allow him to use his property. That access point was provided so that they could have access to the property. In fact, you have a driveway that goes into the property into a gravel plump pad onto the site right now. So I'm, I guess I'm a little confused as to why you think we don't have any right to it because they actually own it and have access to that, to that easement and the ability to use it. You know, as far as the site distances go, we have looked at site distances. I'm gonna show you quickly what I have for that.
He's the developer.
These are.
The engineering, the boss engineer, they were hired by the show.
These are the site distance measurements on this road. I I think the idea that this is unsafe is not a true statement. This, the entrance is pushed back 100, more than 100 feet, which is actually the state requirement. It's actually 145 feet looking to the left. And there's 155 to this dot right here. There's 200 feet to this dot right here. Stopping site distances for 200 feet are looking for my notes here, those actually exceed the stopping site distances for that, so they are safe. The crosswalk, I believe, and I I apologize because I haven't been the one involved with this all along. Tom Greer was involved, but I believe that this crosswalk was a discussion with the board early on. And this was the idea to bring it across to get over to the restaurant over here. I believe that's what happened. There is another access point out the front that does come down to the sidewalk as well. And that's, either one could be used. I disagree with what Mr. Schofield just said about this area in the middle. Often those areas in the middle are what we call landing zones where pedestrians can look left, look right, crossover, there's a place to pause, they look right, look left, and move. It's a safety zone in the middle. It's not, it's not unreasonable to have one of those. As a matter of fact, if you go into any busy community, they're often have those, and that's what those are for. And help reduce pedestrian safety. So, you know, with that, yes, we are proposing to modify this. And I suppose if we want to get into a legal discussion, you know, and we're going to read that easement for, datum for what it is, you know, the landscaping of this entrance may not be allowed as it has been done. But the applicant certainly has the right to pave and do utilities and things in this road per the easement indeed, at least in the way that we read that.
Also, questions, is there? Paul?
We, Peter, may I weigh in on this, though?
Yeah, I was gonna ask.
Peter, can you weigh in on this as far as the deed rights away?
Mr. Schofield raises a number of issues. The last one was that the town should accept, I think he was suggesting that the town should accept Forest Ridge Drive as a town road, at least a portion of it. Of course, that's not something that the planning board can do. Mr. Schofield would have to petition an article for the annual meeting and ask the legislative body for the town of Lincoln to do that. So you can take that off your list. As far as the the easement and the language in the easement, I tend to agree with Mr. Walsh. The applicant owns the property on which the hotel is proposed to be located. The applicant owns the property on which the road or driveway which provides access to the hotel is located. The planning board's job is to, is to apply the application to the town's ordinance. The planning board's job is not to try to resolve legal disputes pertaining to legal documents recorded in the registry of deeds. So I would urge you to, not to wade into the arguments that the recorded documents do not allow the applicant to gain access to the proposed hotel over Forest Ridge Drive. I I guess the other issue is Mr. McLaughlin raised. He suggested that, I think it was Stephen Perna who did the, the traffic study for the hotel. You did not use accurate data. It's up to you to decide whether or not you want Mr. Perna to take another look at the data that he used and make sure he considered the correct number of units when he was, when he was writing his report. Given the fact that it appears as though this probably won't be approved tonight because of the sewer capacity issue. Maybe I'm wrong about that, but from what I heard earlier, there's, there's, there's a fairly significant sewer capacity issue that probably needs to be resolved before the planning board makes a decision. You do have an opportunity, if you want, to have, or to ask the applicant to have their traffic expert take a closer look at the number of units and make sure that his report is accurate, and take a closer look at any other issues that Mr. Schofield or Mr. McLaughlin have raised regarding site distances or any other safety issues that you think the applicant's traffic expert should take a second look at.
Thank you, Peter.
Yeah, I have a question, I think, for Mr. Walsh. I'm looking at the Perna study. And I know that there was a study and then there was a addendum to it or a follow-up to it or whatever. But it looks like, like he's comparing a no-build situation to a full buildout of Forest Ridge with 498 units, regardless of how many are there now and how many are built and not built. He's looking at 498 units. And then the third scenario was 498 Forest Ridge units with the proposed hotel. Am I reading that correctly, that this current study does take full buildout of Forest Ridge into consideration?
Yes, absolutely. I'm gonna share my screen one more time here, just to show the report. This is the Perna addendum that was here. We got this information, so the question was, where did that information come from? We did get that information from the town. I think Carol helped us get that information. Our understanding of this is that the Forest Ridge development was conceptually approved for 498 dwellings. 222 of those units have been constructed, and there's a potential for 276 units. That's the readily available information out there on approvals. And those are exactly, to your point, Mr. Chairman, of what was, what was analyzed here, which were the no-build volumes with 498 units, the build volumes with 498 units with the hotel, and then the change due to the proposed hotel. So I don't know, we've, we've used the best available information that we have from the town and feel pretty comfortable with that as we know it right now.
Well. I noticed on a traffic study that there was no inclusion of the existing road that comes between Fallag Road and the Forest Ridge Drive, one by the Common Man. And also, there was no consideration I could find given for traffic or the access to the Kankakee ski area. Am I correct in that, Bill?
Sorry, I think you probably are correct in that.
So if if we had them look at that, should they not also look at the ability for traffic to come out of that road or does go out of that road currently? Because not all the traffic from Forest Ridge goes out to Main Street. Some of it comes out between that road, side road by the Common Man. And also, even though it's very low traffic, the traffic that goes, goes into the Kankakee area, I don't think was included in that traffic report.
Yeah, and I think the, the other important part to point of a traffic study, just so everybody understands this, this is a peak hour, peak 15 minutes in the worst Saturday of the season. This is not traffic that happens all the time here. This is a very specific worst-case scenario that you're looking at.
Right. And that's what I'm talking about with that side road, because if you're taking that peak traffic flow and say it's backed up from Route 112, then people are going to go out that little side road. And I don't think that was taken in consideration. I think that would, that alleviates some of the traffic going out on the, onto the Main Street.
Correct. And this, again, I think this traffic report did assume full buildout in 10 years. It's taken quite a while, I think, to build out what's already been approved and probably an aggressive approach to what, what will actually happen there.
Any other, Phil?
That's information. The land or the Common Man Restaurant is, as a roadway to the deed, that's why the road goes to the back of his property. We traded his land for permanent easement to go in Forest Ridge. And the road coming across, Forest Ridge going down the Kankakee area, was given to SAD to maintain that road, the town full access to it because of town land, otherwise you could not build it, so town land was a road. You look up the deed, you find easements, it wasn't mentioned here, another deed in this, in the deed was going across Forest Ridge Drive. That's only one of the easements. There are two other easements going through that property. All concessions, he's a neighbor, one of the others.
Thanks, Mr. Patterson. And one of the deeds, Mr. Patterson has two rights away that are heated and right out on that property, and it is in the, it is in the deed. I don't see it in any of these that were before tonight, but I have a copy one that shows that it's.
I agree, it was privy to that when it first started.
There were no others but those two, at least where we're allowed.
That's why the town ski jump is not existed anymore because the Forest Ridge Drive, we went through it, the permissions from the town. It become a graphic, and the jump of the ski jump down after Kankakee. That was given to Forest Ridge, the Robert, or the town to use that road through, that put in permanent easement.
Well, something like what Peter says, we.
That part of the road is not part of our, not part of our, our part of these, just your deals is part of front, we entered the hotel. Just give you that information with just by in the past, that was period in the whole.
I mean, this is recent, 2016. When any other members of the public speak at this point?
Well, I'd just like to comment on a couple of points that were made by Mr. Walsh. Can I go ahead? Okay. When you are evaluating an easement, easements come in all different flavors. It is a matter of negotiation between the property owner and the easement holder in terms of what rights are being conveyed. You can't say because you own the property under the easement in fee simple that you have all rights to it. For example, if you had a easement to run a sewer line, that doesn't mean you can go to swimming pool. And then you have to look at the document and you have to evaluate the legal rights that were conveyed, and you have to live with those legal rights. And frankly, yeah, if you want to go forward and plan this hotel and get, if the planning board ultimately approves it, you may be facing a lawsuit that enjoins you from building. And if you want to go down that path, go ahead.
Thank you. That's, that's between now. Dave, you have a question?
Yes, well, I have a comment, and I would disagree with what Mr. Schofield reported earlier. And that the town did offer me an easement to go on Forest Ridge Drive. I went to the town and asked for an easement to go on there because I entered, would enter before their guard check, which is where their property starts. And they, I, they, the town allowed me to do that, and I had that for six or eight years. And then Forest Ridge and Mr. Schofield made a big deal out of it, with, with them assuring me and everything. They were going to close it off. They had a fence there that was rotting at the time. They had, had actually rebuilt the fence and everything like that. But they're coming in here saying that they're the great neighbors and everything like that. I'm here to disagree with them, that they're not great neighbors. And they want to stop everything. They can't even get along with developments in their own, within their own Forest Ridge area. So I just wanted to make that known, that they, they should be allowed access to that road because they do not have sole ownership of that road. They don't even own the property. They have these across that property to get to their property, is what it came down to. I didn't go further and hire lawyers or anything like that, also, though, I'm not going to be able to. I didn't want to spend their lawyers, so they want to fight everything. I just wanted to make that known, that it was in the past, given an easement to me. And Alan Patterson got an easement, but before Forest Ridge was even fought up. He built his house the same year I built mine. And that was before Forest Ridge started doing any of that stuff. So that's why he got his permit or easement to get out onto that road. That was a town road at one time.
All right, would anyone else like to speak? Motion to close public comment at this time, second. All in favor?
I, I, you seconded that.
Sure, I think so. All conditions, I think everyone can assume, be to see the guy why it has been resolved.
I'd like to respond to that last one if I could.
Very closely, you're talking about Mr. Bowden's comment?
Yes, I'd like to respond to that. I'm sorry, I was on mute. I was trying to.
They would have the objection to be speaks.
I don't know.
Motion to open public comment again. All right, all in favor, I, all right, everyone, go ahead.
All right, well, you know, first of all, we worked very cooperatively with the Bowdens to put our trash, you know, area in a situation that satisfied all the neighbors at the time at some great expense to us and to shield it from everyone with, with landscaping. We surveyed the property, put up the fence, took, took the appropriate precautions to, to, you know, make sure that, that, that the fencing was, you know, fair to everyone there. So I fail to see why he feels we were bad neighbors there. We went out of our way to cooperate with them. And I think if you drive down there now, the net result is that it's a harmonious situation with respect to their properties, the fence, and the trash recycling area. Which, by the way, many people in Forest Ridge and, you know, other visitors use. Which, by the way, many people in Forest Ridge and, you know, other visitors use, even though they shouldn't. With respect to the easement, you've just heard Bob McLaughlin give you the legal description of how easements works, and we'll stand on that. And just the final thing is, I have to disagree with Mr. Walsh's analysis that that site, that that site distance analysis is appropriate to all angles of that intersection. And if you're going to have Pernod do more of an analysis, you should have him do the site distance analysis from all aspects of that intersection, including Route 112. But just to amplify what, you know, Bob says, we plan to defend our property rights here. Thank you.
All right, motion to close public comment.
Can I respond to that?
So we're not going to go back and forth.
Well, you let him do it, why won't you let somebody else respond? I just want to say, I didn't bring up the issue about the dumpsters or anything like that, that was another member. Mr. Bowden sits on your board who brought it to this planning board about their dumpster and their situation. And they are still in noncompliance, because they weren't supposed to build any more units unless they had more dumpsters available, and they still haven't had any more dumpsters available. And that's all, I wasn't complaining about the dumpster issue, but he brought it up, so.
Well, I suggest you take the dumpster overflow issue up with Bob Coolidge Construction.
All right, I think, you know, we've done enough back and forth, we're getting off topic yet.
I just want to correct something, it wasn't this Bowden, my father. No, it wasn't.
All right. All in favor, aye. Thank you, everybody.
Jim?
Yes, Peter.
Just on a couple of, just to keep the record clean, on a couple of occasions, you've referred to the items on page sixteen of the March eleven, twenty twenty minutes, you've referred to those as conditions. And of course, when we're dealing with planning boards and zoning boards, conditions are usually conditions of approval. So those aren't really conditions, those are, those are just issues that back in March, those are the issues that you identified for the applicant as issues that you wanted them to clean up or further clarify for you, so they're not, they're not conditions, they're just issues remaining to be resolved.
You know, same results you had, you know, a little cloudy, you know, starting to clear up better. Same thing.
Satisfied? We have a detention warrant, we ask. Ray asked more information on the fire suppression. Can you summarize what that was again, please? Do you have that down, Carol?
Is Ray still there?
Is he still there?
Yes, I'm still here, sorry, the internet tripped down, I was kicked off. I'm sorry, what was the question?
The remaining issues for the remaining issue on the fire suppression, what did you need to show on the plan?
Yeah, the, again, our recommendation on the, on the, on the fire protection issue is to submit a basis of design report as per our comment. And I would also, I would also note that there was discussion at the staff level to allow the applicant to actually do a, what's called a site-specific hydraulic analysis. Now that Weston and Sampson is on board to do that work, to make a determination as how best to do the fire protection at that location. So our recommendation is that that analysis be, or that's at the option of the applicant to do that analysis, but our recommendation is to submit that basis of design report as part of the application. Does that answer the question?
Was there one other thing on there, Ray, which was the fire hydrant and this how? For cemental or something, I was just trying to find your
Yeah, as far as a cemental, again, we recommend a basis of design report, and then details on the water storage tank, and then also a detail on the hydrant assembly. Because there was detail on the plans for either one of those items.
I think I'm number four.
Anyway, that was the other part.
Have any issue putting that on there?
Hi, there, the board. Add a comment to the rate, firing, this whole system design is the fire sorry about that, the fire fire drilling system is going to be, take a lot more time, because of the building designs and its engineering aspect of it. So I kind like the Ray ideas, but giving that design upfront right now could be a challenge. Because last meeting that you guys wanted to saw where the tanks are going, so we went out and saw you the tanks that we have possibility of put it on a site. It was a Paul wants to know, you know, how big the tanks are, where we're putting it. And it was just the roughly design on a site review that where the tanks are going. So it will be state and the local fire marshal that we need to pull the permit before we do any any building, anything, so the NFPA codes and the fire hydrants and all of that will be coming into play by recommendation by the local chief and, and the state that we need to pull the permit from. Because design is, is a lot of money. And I need the approval before we can spend any more money on building designing, because that will be the full-blown of the building.
Thought you would make that a condition, Mr. Chairman.
So, so I'm asking, you want to follow the recommendations? Can you ever possibly make it a condition approval later on? If you get that, Bob?
I'm fine with that.
Okay, so we're not going to
Can we get Ron, can we get Chief Beard to chime in on that?
Yeah, go ahead.
What's that?
Go ahead.
Yeah, I'd just like to have Ron on, Chief Beard on the record on his, his thoughts on that.
Yeah, and one aspect Cam's license is correct, he can't design a sprinkler system until he designs the building, because of the loading of the building and the actual design of it. We worked on what would be needed per what we've been given as a conceptual. And he's shown on the plan, the time for that amount of water on site and everything. In the meeting we had earlier today, it could possibly save him some money if he does do that site-specific evaluation for the water. Fire pumps and backup generators are not cheap. So what it may cost to have an engineer look at what possibly could be available on that site might save him some money, or he could just choose to go with the fire pumps and the tanks, you know, either way.
So you're finding, basically you're finding
Yeah, he's not going to get the permit until we get an engineered design for the sprinkler system. And, you know, if he goes with fire pumps, obviously, it's going to meet the required codes.
Anyone else have any comment on that?
So, just for clarification, are you saying that is Ron saying that they do not have to submit this design report?
He got to read, he got to submitted the information before he got his approval.
But not before he gets approved. Because Ray said you want it before the approval. Before the site plan approval, Ron's saying he doesn't need it.
Well, you say, he's saying he can't.
Ron's saying it would be beneficial if he did it ahead of time.
He's going to need it, he's going to need it to get his state
State permit.
Right.
But that's not even for the approval, that's what Ron's saying. He doesn't
In his opinion.
Maybe you should ask Ray what the pros and cons are of waiting or including it as part of the approval.
Ray, would anyone be harmed if we made it a condition of approval?
Well, I mean, I think, I mean, that's definitely a board decision. You heard me that I recommended, you know, that you get a basis design report in hand, and again, we're not looking for a final design here. We're just looking for a little more detail as to how the system is going to work.
Tank design.
Going forward, so it's a basis of design report, could be a two or three-page memorandum. If that can't be achieved, then I guess it can't be achieved, and you want to move forward with the conditional approval, that's certainly the board's decision.
Sounds pretty important to me.
So I'll pull a board. Joe? Like follow Ray Corvus' recommendation?
I agree.
OJ?
I guess I'm fine with making it a condition of approval, he's going to have to get the work done in order to pass the state thing.
Okay.
I'm fine with the condition of approval.
Yeah, I agree.
You agree with OJ? Okay. Black, Ermun, are you still there?
I am.
What's your?
I am, I'm speechless. I guess the question before us is, should we make this a contingent approval based on the final plan, or should we request a basis of design as Ray has recommended? I think Ray's recommendation is entirely reasonable. And there's no reason not to follow Ray's recommendation. That's the reason we pay Ray is to make recommendations of that sort. And I, for one, would like to know that it's at least a reasonable design before requesting the final spec and then being down to a choice between approving and not approving it. So I would vote in favor of Ray's recommendation to request the basis of design, which, but he's telling us should take a couple of days maybe to get, because sure the engineer who generated the plan knows why he did it, and what basis of it was.
I think we should, if he gets approval, no guarantee he's going to get approval, I think it should be a condition of approval, so leave it at that.
So does that mean you just pulled it on that?
I pulled, I pulled a board, so.
Town is telling us to get the reports of what, what, I didn't hear.
If you, if you get approval, that'll be a condition of approval.
Will be the condition of the approval.
Who's to sign off?
Thank you.
You're going to need that before you get your building permit anyway.
Correct.
Next item is the traffic study. Want to have an updated traffic study? Additional traffic generated by the Kank rec center.
Only one. I thought you wanted to look at site distances. It's now on earth, like, site distances. Also, maybe the fact that the road that goes cut by the Common Man, if that would affect it. And if there's any effect on the, because Kank rec wasn't included in there either, that the traffic that uses that. But as I said, it's probably going to be a wash anyway, because I don't think if that road, that access road left with the Common Man was included in that study, that's a goal.
Anyone else have any thoughts on that? Except the traffic study as is.
I see the Kank rec road would only alleviate some traffic.
Right.
So in other words, adding that to the study is only going to show that it's less convenient.
Well, considering, yeah, I mean, I don't know how it works in the traffic world, but they're, you know, like, as Phil said, they take on the worst-case scenarios. Our Christmas holiday day, when Christmas week, when they're all locals trying to get into the game versus Forest Ridge coming out, and then the people, I don't know all, all that. And then there may be people coming out of the hotel, maybe if they can't turn go out on Route 112, maybe like you just said, up that way to go out on Paul Road and get out faster. So I mean, they could conceivably make Paul Road busier. So I don't know how all that. I mean, I would think that would have been figured into the traffic study as well, but it didn't seem like it was included in that, that's why I thought that it probably should be considered.
Included on the first report, the street that is coming out right next to that restaurant, because that's what we've been told what to include it in the traffic study by the board. Because we were very clear what we need to include in our study. It was a guy from the board which traffic, the traffic study need to be done. So that, that's why it's the way it is. The slip lane that is coming out of the front of the front of the restaurant was included in that original study.
Somebody comment on that? Black, Ermun, do you have any comment?
Believe it or not, I don't.
All right, so everyone's acceptable except the traffic study as is. All right, last issue is the soil capacity study, so it has to be sent back.
Can I make?
Go ahead.
One, one other comment, I know I made this at the last meeting, it did not get listed onto these list of four things. There's the landscape design, which is C three point five. I'm very happy with the landscaping as it's shown on this from Forest Ridge Road along the multi-use trail up to where it kind of bears left, and then there's an intersection with a new sidewalk coming up from the, from the new hotel. Beyond that is where the new proposed parking lot is the closest to the multi-use trail. And there is no landscaping between the parking lot and the multi-use trail. And I can see that you probably don't want to put a lot of landscaping there, because it'll be used for snow storage. My concern is that that snow storage gets pushed out onto the multi-use trail as shown on that same sheet up in the left-hand corner where this, that's being used as a snow storage area. My request would that, that there be boulders placed between the parking lot and the multi-use trail at no less than eight feet apart, so that a snowplow cannot get through there to push snow out onto the multi-use trail. So for that length, I mean, you're talking just a few boulders to just separate the multi-use trail from the parking lot with those boulders, so it doesn't get buried in snowy move from the parking lot.
Someone else have any comment on that?
I'd like to comment, I'd like to second OJ's comment and make with a proviso that the space between the boulders, the line, the closest line of the boulders to the multi-use trail be sufficiently set back from the trail, because everybody knows that the imaginative use of cats and snowplows and so on, people are very good at stacking snow and then getting it to tip over onto the next thing, and the multi-use trail actually up by Loon is compromised in the spring melt every year by accumulations from the lot on the north side across, across from Loon. It's not badly compromised, and there's usually ways around it, but in this case, in this location, there would not be easy ways around it necessarily, so that OJ's comments be applied and the sense of those comments be made clear, so that the, if necessary, those boulder line can be adjusted further away from that trail so that they cannot get by the intent and get snow onto that trail, because it is a convenient spot for dumping snow, and it would, would be used for that.
Oh, jumping. Boulders are probably the right thing. I think you want something that if they hit it, they're gonna rack it like a fence or something because once you plow into it, you pile it up and then someone comes along with a loader and that rock, they just push it over it. So you need something that's, that's gonna look like it and maybe even fence, I don't know, something trees, something that they won't wreck or will cause damage, you know, because.
Little bit of trees.
But, but a boulder, I mean, a boulder will just.
So the fences some hotels are in the interstate, fence along interstate hotels are all gone because of the boulders.
Eventually the fence, fence will last a couple of seasons.
I'm just thinking the, the boulder set a boundary where the plows can't push. I understand a loader can do it, but if a loader does that intentionally, I mean, the town has a right to not allow that to happen.
As long as you're gonna place.
You know, and it, and it, 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 it won't happen accidentally with boulders there. Someone's got to intentionally lift snow up over the boulder, throw it under the bike path as opposed to the guy plowing, you know, at, at midnight out in the storm and can't tell where the, where the boundary is and, and keeps going a little bit too far.
It just felt firstly.
Yeah, the boulders will prevent the accidental stuff, so.
Firstly.
Maybe it should be snowier than six feet of height because eight feet, wow, it's soaked it through them.
Yeah, I'd suggest close to the knee feet.
I agree.
I don't, I don't.
How about? Yeah, how about eight feet on center? If we had, you know, three foot boulders.
Yeah, eight, eight feet on center, you're not gonna fit a plow here.
Yep.
I agree. Okay, Steve, you good with that?
Oh, they're good.
All right, so capacity study. They have to revisit their numbers. Bill, how soon, before you can turn that around, do you think?
Um, I think it'll be relatively soon, as I said, I know Horizon was working on it today when that sort of different name was discovered, so I'm hopeful that we'd have that within a week or so. Cam, would you agree?
Anything on the agenda two weeks from tonight?
You have telecommunications town coming in next Friday. After the pond.
Okay.
Hold, hold on one sec, hold on one second, Larry. I gotta mute a call.
Second.
Yeah.
Obviously the next meeting.
On Ray's memorandum, first care review technical memorandum number four, you were talking about, he also offered something that, in his comments, does submit a stormwater pollution prevention plan prior to constructing the start, notice termination upon construction, pleasantries required under the US EPA construction general permit. Should this be done prior to, or is it a note of complaint? Can we ask Ray? Ray, can you comment on that?
Yeah, the, the stormwater pollution prevention plan can be submitted just prior to construction. It's on that list because basically this is a punch list of outstanding items, so that's why it's still on there. So I've talked to Bill about it and, you know, we understand that it'll, it'll happen.
Doesn't need to be a condition, is it on the plan? How does that work?
Uh, you can make it a condition if you like, but we'll certainly chase it down that when the time comes.
And, and the only reason I make that comment is given what we've gone through at the time, the stormwater prevention plan, right? Be important to this project.
Okay, so timing, next week is the pond, the 22nd is the cell tower.
Okay. Second Wednesday in August.
That's the 12th.
Oh, we're running out of ideas again about the stormwater. You just said.
Uh, Ray's suggesting that the stormwater prevention plan, it can be done, I don't know, some intent prior to construction. They do a notice of termination upon completion. That all that should be a condition of the approval.
Okay, so if we get to the approval, how we can add that on there?
Right. Or may want to be on the plan too. No? I mean, this, this board's spent a lot of time with that. On up to the plans and this is, just want to make sure that we treat everybody fairly when it comes to how, how we handle stormwater.
Stormwater management on the plan.
Think, Ray, doesn't this swift just refer to the stormwater alleviation during construction?
Ray, are you still there?
Yes.
Yeah, it, it does, it does refer to construction.
Okay, so this is not the storm, the whole stormwater management running off site.
Right.
It's not, it's not the town ordinance.
It's the town ordinance.
EPA can't mess up the rivers when you're digging and.
Exactly.
Cetacean, right.
All right.
So he has to do that anyways.
Was already provided that stuff in his plan for the.
The stormwater ordinance, yes.
Okay, so also we have to extend the 65 day clock to approval. Bill, Kamlish, you willing to do that?
Cam, are you there?
Yes, what, what did you say? I didn't.
They're asking to extend the, the.
Meeting, yeah, the process.
Not the sewer study.
Not the heavy camper on, on that side, but the sewer capacity, it, it, the sewer plant has a capacity, we are talking about the line itself. As far as I was talking to Nate this afternoon, after Ray made a comment that Nate went out and, and poke around on, on those sewer lines. So regardless of the capacity, I, in, I think that, you know, helping will be there because of the second line is already there on a main street. But as a diloper, i- 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 if there is a line that need to be changed to meet that, you know, I don't mind contributing to whatever the modification that we need to do to justify the sewer for the line capacity. I prefer to have a voting done today to put that as a condition on a permit for the sewer. But everybody, you know, this is almost what, two years, almost close to two years that I'm trying to get the permit to move the next step. Just for the site plan approval. That's my take. So I, sewer study is already been, I already had that engineer recalculating based on that word, that's the second line is and what the size is of the second line is. And it, according to Nate, it does goes all the way up to, it does not tie back to the south, south sideline, it goes directly to the sewer point. So hopefully we will get the study done in next couple of days.
Okay, so you're telling us you're not willing to extend the clock for approval?
I.
You want us to take a vote tonight?
I think he's, he's asking, if I understand, he's asking us to make a, take a decision tonight with that as a, as a condition.
That's right.
Which do you want to weigh in on that?
I, I was kidding, Mike, I guess my only comment is, um, it was, it wasn't until Kamlish's study that it really hit home in my office that we supposedly have a surcharge condition on one line or the other. And initially, th- this project was on that line. And then in conversations literally this afternoon, I said, well, how can it, he's, he's building on the north side of the, of 112, how can a line on the south side of 112 be affecting this? Nobody had a good answer. And, but we don't have the, the, the flow capacities on that, or at least from Kamlish's proposed lot down to, um, down to where the, the other hotel was gonna, we, it hasn't been, we don't know what that flow capacity is, so, uh, I, I don't, I don't know if I think that we should wait until we have that or if we make it a condition. I'm not sure what the condition of, I'd like to see it before, I guess. I'd, I'd like to see those and if it takes a couple of days, I can't control obviously when you folks meet again, but I think we ought to have that info ahead of time. Certainly, I'm talking as I think, but that's, that's what I think.
Okay, that's fine.
Can I weigh in?
Ray.
Uh, Ray Corber's memorandum called techno, technical memorandum number five A addresses the sewer capacity issue. And in number three, it says there is no available capacity in the existing system for a sewer connection for the Fairfield Inn. So I don't know, I, I don't think, I don't, I'm not sure Mr. Patel wants to force you guys to make a decision tonight because I'm not sure if I'd be in, if I were you, if I'd be comfortable approving a, a project for a hotel when my engineer says there's no available capacity in the existing system for a sewer connection for the Fairfield Inn. What I understand, my understanding is that you're asking or you're suggesting that this be continued for two weeks. You meet, you have a meeting scheduled for two weeks from tonight and during that two week period, hopefully Mr. Patel's team can satisfy Ray Corber that there is in fact capacity in the existing system for a sewer connection for the Fairfield Inn. And then perhaps you can issue your conditional approval and outline all the other conditions pertaining to the fire design and, you know, this, the snow and the multi-use trail and so on and so forth. But it seems reasonable to continue for two weeks to get this very important issue resolved.
I don't, I don't think we get room any.
So I have, I have a question, but I know you're, you're saying you want to get this squared away as far as what the hotel will contribute to this line, but there still seems to be a question, at least in my mind, is that what's gonna happen with all of the other previous commitments that are out there that town has given as far as steward? How does that work in conjunction with the hotel? I mean, because if the whole, if this board gives a hotel saying approval because Ray says there's enough in line in the room now, but South Peak, the blocks that were just all down along the river say, we're gonna start building now and the town's left with, they don't have any capacity on main street and, and the, what do you do then? They don't have to come back to you, they'll, they've already got their approvals.
So they don't have to get main use permits.
I know, that's, I mean, someone needs to look at that.
I'm not gonna be looking at sewer capacity.
Right.
So how much does this cross the town down the road?
All right, I mean, so. I, I would think someone would have to look at that along with it. Is that Ray? I mean, how does now do that?
I'm building, get no water capacity, so. Right, we do, we have no capacity.
Can I speak to that? Jim?
You go ahead.
Well, I think that's a question for the Board of Selectmen and it's a discussion for a different day. And, you know, again, your job is to apply this application to the ordinance and see if they can meet the criteria. It's an important issue that you raised, but it's not really probably pertinent to whether or not you approve or deny this particular application tonight or two weeks from now. Ray has just gotten reconnected to us, so he's back. At the end of June, or maybe it was their first meeting in July, the Board of Selectmen, I believe, clarified their first come, first served policy and correct me if I'm wrong, OJ, but the decision made by the Selectmen was that this application and the Hampton Inn application were filed before June 1st. And so therefore, the engineering for these two projects would not have to take into consideration the vested and approved but unbuilt units in the town of Lincoln when considering water and sewer capacity. But all subsequent applications would have to take those vested but unbuilt units into consideration when they do their water and sewer studies. So that's, I think, the current status in the town of Lincoln. And Ray, you can weigh in if you want now that you've joined us, but I don't know if that answers your question, Paul. I think we should kind of try to keep that overall big town of Lincoln issue separate from this application a little bit.
Well, I do understand that. I mean, that's what I'm trying to figure out, what's the best way to approach it? I understand that you want to keep this application separate, but somewhere this board has a responsibility, I think, to, to either not issue permits or approve applications based on what the town has per capacity. And I don't know which, at what point that is. I mean, we can continue to, if the planning board continues to approve applications, irregardless of what the town has, then where are you at? So at, at some point or two, I would think have to, have to be able to come together and, and you have to figure that out. I don't know if that's here, I don't know if the, the, the Board of Selectmen, but if the planning board just keeps approving applications that just put other people off at odds, what, what are we doing here? And I guess that's.
A lot of them is not built, my friend. A lot of those approvals that goes through the town board has not built out. And if you start taking out for all those built out, then there is no enough sewage or the water in town.
And, and I agree with that. I've told the town for years that according to the Department of Wildlife Services, there's only three-year vesting in, for sewer. So the town would have to go back and see what, what's out there and what that, what's been here for three years, you know, where that's at. But none of that's been done, so I don't know. I mean, you know, you just keep getting approvals and someone's gonna get mad somewhere along the line because they can't do what they were told they could. Is it just, is it just that how it works? We just keep giving approvals and then when someone gets mad?
You're, you're aware of what the Selectmen recently voted on. Peter just stated very clearly. You have a problem with that, I think the forum for you to discuss that is at a Board of Selectmen's meeting and not here as pertaining to this, this application.
I'm just trying to clarify whether the planning board's position is to keep approving permits, irregardless of what the town water and sewer supply is. And that's what I'm trying to clarify. If you say that it doesn't matter, if.
I'm not saying it doesn't matter. I'm saying I think Peter fully described what the process is, is that, that we're on a first come, first served basis after taking into account all of the vested projects except for the two projects that, that were in, and prior to that becoming the policy, which this is one. So, so when, when the next hotel comes in and is gonna build a hundred room hotel that hasn't been applied for before, it's under the new policy. And the planning board, is, is everybody else here aware of what the, the Selectmen's position is? Peter just explained, okay, so there we go. Now what don't you understand? That's the new policy and the planning board, and it does, I mean, the applicant will take that into consideration, but we're getting way off track.
No, 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 I'm up. Because, and looking at all this information, it was stated that there's no capacity in the line.
I don't know yet.
There's, there's one.
They're gonna review that.
Wait a minute, wait.
But, and that one section.
There's, there's, there's sewer capacity of our treatment system. And then there's sewer, sewer capacity in every single line segment in this town. What is stopping this process right here is one segment and one pipe. Okay? That's the problem that this applicant has to solve. He needs to get his sewer to our sewer treatment plant. End of discussion, I don't know what else. That's, that's what we're looking at. End of discussion. I don't know what else. That's, that's what we're looking at.
We should be dealing hypotheticals.
I want to go. You've got a lot of information.
There's, there's one more thing bothering me, maybe. Peter. I just want to make sure the town doesn't end up with this road just because these guys can't get along. How, how does this work? That's a big.
Well, it had to be voted on at town meeting.
Um, if, uh, the Forest Ridge folks feel like, uh, well, first of all, I guess, there's, um, there, there's, has been and will continue to be lots of litigation pertaining to easements and what they allow and what they don't allow, and whether they're being overburdened and whether they're being improperly relocated or blocked. Um, so easements are ripe for litigation. However, your job is not to sort of wade into that type of legal dispute. If the Forest Ridge folks are of the opinion um, that Mr. Patel, um, is somehow violating their easement to use Forest Ridge Drive with the construction of this hotel, if it's ultimately approved by you, then I would imagine that if, you know, if they feel that strongly about it, then the Forest Ridge folks might uh, file a lawsuit against Mr. Patel to try to stop the construction of the hotel. Uh, hopefully, that lawsuit would not involve the town of Lincoln, because that would be between Forest Ridge and Mr. Patel over a document recorded in the Registry of Deeds that, uh, the town of Lincoln is not a party to. Um, so that's issue number one. Issue number two is the suggestion, um, made by Mr. Schofield that the town should take over part of Forest Ridge Drive as a town road. And that would require approval of the voters at an upcoming town meeting. And unless the Selectmen were willing to put that article on the warrant, which I suspect they probably wouldn't be uh, inclined to do, then Mr. Schofield or anybody else interested in having the town take over part of Forest Ridge Drive would have, have to gather the necessary number of signatures to place an article on the warrant, to ask the voters to approve an article to accept part of this road as a town road, um, which I would imagine might be a, um, a difficult um, uh, warrant article to get approved, but I guess you never know.
Yeah, thank you.
So I guess, we're not ready, everyone agree that, so everyone agree that we're not ready to take a vote tonight?
I agree that we're not ready to take a vote tonight. However, I would suggest that we agree on what the conditions of approval are, if.
For the outstanding issues.
Or the outstanding issues, um, or both.
The outstanding issue is the sewer capacity on that north side of the line, north side of the Main Street.
I believe that's the one.
Fire one, was it? Did you have anything with that? As far as the, uh, the, the.
Raise on that basis.
No, we, we decided that if, you know, vote was taken to approval, that would be one of the conditions. And then we talked about the boulders, eight feet on center. I think that was the only two things left. Traffic study, we decided not to have them revisit that. Guy why is it taken care of? And then the sewer capacity we've been talking about for the last 20 minutes or so. Does anyone have anything else?
Jim, if I may, and, uh, I think what you're perhaps about to do, uh, is to make a motion to continue for two weeks. To give, what's, what's that?
I don't think we have time to do it in two weeks. That means that the agenda's pretty full.
Well, to continue to some date certain. And, and in an effort to give, uh, the applicant an opportunity to satisfy the town's engineer regarding the one remaining sort of unresolved issue from the four issues that you started out with from the March 11th minutes on page 16, that being the sewer capacity issue, right? So that's the, out of the four issues you started off talking about, that's the one that I, I think you're not satisfied with quite yet. Um, and so you're going to give the applicant a certain amount of time to satisfy the town's engineer on the sewer capacity issue. We're going to come back on whatever date you continue to, if you go through, I'm talking about. And, uh, assuming that, um, the sewer capacity issue has been resolved between now and then to the town engineer's satisfaction, that's when you'll issue your conditional approval, um, and that's when you can outline all of the other conditions, such as, you know, the boulders being a certain size and a certain, you know, number of feet apart to prevent snow from, uh, blocking the multi-use trail, and will, I'm sure, have to have a condition uh, pertaining to a performance guarantee or a bond, uh, and there may be other conditions. Um, but we can maybe think about those between now and whatever date you continue this to.
In regard to Peter's comment about a bond, who sets the bond? Any amount, is that done by the engineer, is that done by the board, is that done by the town?
We'd have to know what we're going to have on file, and then we have to get cost, the engineer, those projects.
And how do those recommendations get formed? Is it by the engineers, by the attorneys, by Board of Selectmen, Town Manager?
I think Ray discussed that last before.
He did last week.
Yeah.
He did. Right. He's, he said that, uh, the engineer for the applicant gives a proposal, and then Ray, the engineer, would use it, um, and then makes a recommendation. Then the planning board decides, so they're going to take that variation.
Well, there, there has been a proposal, I believe, by the applicant, uh, for bonding in the amount. And he, he was asking for something to be changed, right? Is this the one that, didn't they do that on here?
No.
I thought it was.
It would be a real recommendation on the last meeting.
Bonding would be part of the condition of approval, so it's probably not something you need to discuss tonight. I'll defer to Peter, but.
Carol, how do you feel about continuing for two weeks? Do you think the agenda's too full?
Conceptual or something?
Just a conceptual.
Well, should be appropriate, two items should be to that.
If, if I could just weigh in on the, this is Ray, this is Ray Corber. If I could just weigh in on the bonding issue, that the, uh, construction cost estimate was um, submitted, we reviewed it, we had comments on it, we got it back to Walsh Engineering, so there, there is a number that's been developed so far today.
And he, he was asking for some changes on that, and I thought.
Uh, yeah, we had requested some changes. I think actually it was probably two memorandums ago, and those changes were made.
So last, yeah. Captain willing to extend the 65-day clock for approval till
July 22nd.
I got a question.
Go ahead.
We extended it for two meetings.
Two weeks.
No, what I'm saying, two weeks, yeah, if you go on, have a day for two weeks. We extended it for another month or so more. Something happens, two weeks, we don't have the right of data, so we postponed the meeting for now.
We have, we have to continue anyway. July 22nd. I guess I'm asking the applicant, you won't extend the 65-day clock for approval until July 22nd, 2020? Bill?
Cam, did you get that?
No, I didn't, I.
Um, extending it for two weeks to July 22nd?
Yeah, that, that would sound good. Thank you.
Does that sound good to you?
Yeah.
Okay, yes, we're agreeable, Mr. Chair.
Yep, can you agree to extend it to weeks, 65-day clock approval?
I'll make a motion, we extend, uh.
We're going to continue.
Continue the sharing on July 22nd.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, no motion, cameras.
Thank you, everyone. Thank you.
Thank you all.
Did everyone read the minutes?
Yeah, I have one change, but the other day, what was our last meeting? Well, that's the one I wanted to change.
So I have three sets of minutes, we have to prove all these. This last meeting.
Well, we did, we did a couple of them. I think I listed three, but we maybe only did two.
Okay. All right, keep with page.
On the June 24th meeting minutes.
Okay.
Page 11. Starting on line 419.
419, okay.
And I just, I don't understand this sentence, so you don't want to figure out what it's supposed to say, or eliminate it, but it says, if the current planning board does not represent the homeowners legally, they will not be the board in six months.
What page are you on, OJ?
Page 11. Line 419. Do you see your, do you see your line numbers, Mark?
Yeah, I didn't read.
Uh, are, are you on the draft that was emailed this afternoon or recently?
Printout that has line numbers. Do you have your line numbers on the page?
I do not have line numbers.
Okay, then you're on page 10, second paragraph, last sentence. If, if your print is the same as mine.
All right, so u- under revise and submit all documentation is required?
The, the, this paragraph starts off, well, it's, it's under the heading of Robert McLaughlin. And the.
And what, what, what number paragraph is it?
Under public comment, it's the second paragraph.
I, I think I'm completely in the.
Page, page, well, when I printed it, it was on page 10 of the draft.
But aren't there numbered paragraphs starting from?
This, this numbered lines, and it's line 419.
I don't have numbered lines.
Because it's on a different page, because the pagination is different when you have line numbers or not. June 24th, 2020. If you find the heading that says public comment.
What was the line item, Paul?
419.
Break off that sentence, have to treat it, I would think.
I, I don't know what it means. We'll not be the board in six months. You're all fired. I, I, I just, I don't know what.
Well, we can just cross it out.
Okay. I think he was referring to the board at the Pines. May not be the same board that is here, but I'm not sure. I don't know what he was.
Just give me a string of words and I'll find it.
Further, F R U O A President McLaughlin.
With a further comma, space?
Other comma, space.
F.
F R U O A.
And are there dots after that? President?
President McLaughlin.
There's only one added that the AOT permit requires, et cetera, is that it?
Sentence in that paragraph.
The second sentence you said? If the current planning board does not represent the homeowners legally, they will not be the board in six months?
Correct.
I don't, I don't remember that.
I, I think he was referring to the Pine Homeowners Association, and I don't think it's relevant to any decision. I'd just say cross it out. Okay. Other than that, I'm good.
Okay, so this is on the June 24th minutes. Does anyone have any other changes? Motion to approve the June 24th minutes as amended? Make motion, okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
And it's May 27th, 2020.
We didn't approve the 27th?
I thought we approved.
I was looking at the minutes, it didn't look like we had, so. And I, and I had, um, I had taken her draft, and I, I put the stuff.
So there we go. For proof, the March 11th, May 13th to May 27th minutes.
As amended.
As amended.
We did that at the last meeting.
We did that last meeting.
Well, this, so March, page on some, you can't, pardon me, approve.
May 27th, we're already done.
Right. We, we did that at 10:30 at night, that's why you don't.
If we did May 13th.
It says. If you look at the minutes we just approved, on the last page, it says we approved the minutes of March 11th.
And May.
And May 13th.
And May 27th.
And May 27th.
We just have June 10th.
Oh. Do you have those?
Yeah.
Yeah, my mother died three days before.
Steve was.
Okay.
I guess line 41 to 48 deals with consideration of the meeting minutes, we skipped over that. There we go.
Kevin, Jay, what's the doggy? You've done him, Paul.
Good fortune, don't get it, you're helping.
Do you have any changes with the June 10th meeting? You know, I'm upset.
I'm making much of a.
All in favor? Aye. Post. Steve abstaining. Right, can you add a business?
Let me just think. I don't know what's coming up. Says, uh, from Jenny Harrington, says a backyard house on West Street. Arnold will get approved for three tiny houses, wise of six foundations, six electric meters.
Oh, that's the one.
One has been while a few times.
Is there? Is that true, Ron? Is there, they, they got approved for three and six?
He's saying that three are, three are houses and three are for sheds.
Three for what?
For sheds?
That's what he said. All he was permitted for was three homes and three sheds.
What about three accessory apartments?
Uh, no, he's not been permitted for that, because he hasn't applied for that.
Oh, yes, okay, so he's. Well, he hasn't built anything, so we don't know if the garage is going to be, actually be living spaces at this point.
He mentioned that one time with the rim by, rim, rim, and then went forward any further.
Right. So there's three houses that were approved.
He basically got to sub, subdivide. He basically got to subdivide the two lots and make three lots out of existing two lots. Nobody approved from the board.
So the three lots are
He's supposed to have a primary residence, one on each lot.
Okay.
And he has been approved for a shed, one on each lot.
A shed, I mean, so they all have dimensions to them, these?
Correct.
I'm sorry?
There was on the front.
So there's So he has a foundation underneath the, the house and a foundation underneath this shed?
Well, the foundation's just a way for the utilities to get up to the main house. The house is gonna be elevated.
Just like they are on the seacoast, where you have the the ration.
Yeah.
The flood plain.
Yeah.
They're on stilts.
So three of them, so three, three houses are gonna be on stilts, one foundation underneath it. And then there's gonna be on that same, each individual lot. Yeah, and underneath each, on each lot is gonna be, the other, the other foundation is for the shed or the garage, whatever it is, the shed.
They're gonna be on still, high enough that you can park underneath it?
Yeah, it'd be, it'd be like the one they did over here. You have to the
Oh, yeah, yeah, actually, I G A.
Yeah. He's up high enough, the garage underneath and I, I would upstairs.
Must be in case of letgoes.
We just let it up that high.
So, you know, we just get that everything, the fraction here and the meter bank. I don't think that's really what to do with us.
Well.
I mean, so
He's made, he's, he's told us different things and he totally
I guess.
Keeping it on.
Would you have a eye on it?
Okay, all right. But if you think about it, you get three stuff, you need to divide the lots. You can do what somebody done approved during our town ordinances. If you find an in-law apartment, you probably get away with it. Because you can do that in a regular lot.
What if he's up? So I'm
If you get a regular house, approved lot, you have one house on, one in-law apartment, meter setbacks, you can do it.
Right, you gotta come in for, you gotta come in asking.
Come into the planning board. The committee division.
I think he intends to go to the Z B A, charter a bearing. Have six local houses.
Didn't he discuss that with us?
Yeah, he did.
Yeah, I remember.
He didn't go to Z B A yet?
Is there anyone that
They don't need these sheds, they don't need it.
Right. Has anyone checked that?
It, it was all survey.
Okay.
And then, but the sheds have a meter?
Yes, because he thinks, he thinks that
He thinks he's gonna get through the Z B A.
And convince the Z B A to
I want to convince the homeowners.
They're all in one meter bank group, so that's, I mean, something even abandoned in lot lines, basically.
The parish has the capital, I mean, he's got the, so, so many of each one, isn't it? One down there, so many of each building.
I mean, the only reason I ask is that there are a butters and that they're doing something other than what the abides thought they were gonna do, because someone should probably
Those are parties are gonna get notified and
Sounds like they're concerned. She lives right there, right? Does Jenny Erickson live there?
We're behind it.
I mean, if they're concerned about it.
They've been, they've been calling.
They've been calling?
The grounds been visiting.
Yeah. Yeah, when the concrete truck left, we get a couple of phone calls and it was that breakdown there. He had to come back and explain what he was doing. And he said, I'm following the permit. One primary residence and one shed on each lot. But he plans to talk to the town about either going to the Z B A or whatever to get permission to convert the shed to an accessory, whatever you call it there, so.
But they're gonna, but he wants them to all look at you.
Well, the thing is, going to town once, another second, accessory apartments can be attached to the original unless it's extending, extending circumstances. I think just mostly that's. I'm right, I could be wrong.
There's, you can have a detached accessory.
A building but not have, not dwelling.
Yes, you can have an accessory apartment in
It's attached to a main building.
Or detached.
And I don't know what workforce, I think, too, so.
They're all also board is on being a commercial property.
Yeah.
When you're building six identical units and renting out.
He said he wasn't gonna do all that. It was, it was gonna be free individuals. They had quite a discussion.
You're still in session, right?
Right, we're still in session.
Okay, because I'm still recording this.
I, I spotted that. I weren't sure. Someone was looking into it because it seemed like
Whenever you write it off.
All right, anything else?
What's the dream?
Is there a second? Second. All in favor?
The list, you put 276, 3872.